Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the municipality of Swan Valley West, held in council chambers 216 Main Street West, Swan River, Manitoba, the second day of June 2020 at 7:02 PM. President, myself, Deputy Reeve Bellasha, Councilors Foster, Gade Pierpont, Kuschnerek, as well as Counselor Wills. From the LUD Committee, we have Schneider, Kuschnerek, and Curtis Hack. Interim Acting CAO Ken Jenkins will try to be on the phone as we move forward. With Finance, we have James Webb. And from Administration, Deborah Schaefer. Moved by Counselor Pierpont, seconded by Counselor Bellasha, resolved that the agenda for the special meeting of council held the second day of June 2020 shall be adopted as presented.
I'm kind of curious. We did agree to a special meeting on Thursday at 7:00 PM. But I don't recall ever providing notice or agreeing to a special meeting tonight. So when I checked our notice board, we haven't given notice of special meeting in accordance with our bylaw. So it's curious if we're really having a special meeting? Because the notice mentions only a public hearing tonight.
Well, perhaps it was missed in here as a special meeting. You have to have a meeting, I guess, to open a public hearing.
Not necessarily. The difference is whether or not we can pass the bylaw there. If it isn't a special meeting, we can't pass the bylaw. But if it is a special meeting, we have to give notice.
Well, it is just around as a special meeting built around the public hearing.
Okay, so when did we provide notice of special meetings to the public?
Well, we had it advertised in the newspaper like four times.
What you have advertised in the newspaper is a public hearing. You don't have a special meeting advertised. So was there a notice I didn't see? Because there's none on the window, there's none on the bulletin board, there's none on the office door in Benito indicating this is a special meeting tonight. All the notices indicate simply this is a public hearing.
So what are your wishes then?
I guess it's council's decision. I just probably know that if we are having a special meeting, it's not constituted in accordance with our bylaws. That we're required to give the public notice of meeting. I'll leave it to council to decide.
Anyone have anything to say?
I think that if it's an oversight, I'm sure that we can go ahead and there won't be too much objection to it.
I agree with that.
Well, you still have to give notice though. For a special meeting.
So Bill, when did you discover this?
When I walked in today and saw Agenda, which I hadn't been provided. Like our bylaw provides that these agendas would be sent to members of council ahead of time. So I've checked my email, I've received no Agenda. I've received no notice of special meeting. The publics received no notice of special meeting. My first inclination for having a special meeting was when I walked into a public hearing and found this on my desk. The second part is more interesting. The information we've provided to the public for tonight's bylaw, 8220, is not the same as the bylaw council is now set to consider tonight. And that's fine, as long as the tax rates go down. But in the bylaw that's proposed for tonight, the tax rates are actually going up in one case from what was given to the public. We're required by law to provide the public the correct information. And we cannot raise taxes once we're given that information. So...
There was a copy that was circulating, but that copy that you have tonight matches the budget.
This particular copy is what I picked up at, would be about 1:30 today tomorrow. I was in the office.
I don't remember where you put it.
And we made sure that anybody that did pick it up had the correct copy.
So this is the copy I was provided at 1:30 today?
And did you get a copy by email?
This is the copy I asked for at the office. When I asked for a copy of what was being given to ratepayers who asked for a copy.
Right, and so we provided to anybody that picked up a copy, we provided the correct one, including yourself.
It was an email.
Yeah.
Does it say somewhere on there it's corrected or something?
It says this is the one that will be passed tonight.
Unfortunate that we revealed the wrong information.
Well, you know what? There is those chances that that would happen, but as long as we catch it and correct it, we're good to go.
Second here in the row now, we've given the ratepayers the wrong bylaw.
This is... yeah. We've got it corrected.
Very good.
Okay, we do have notice of a special meeting for Thursday, which was called, in essence, to deal with some bridge quotes or recommendations. I guess we could add reading of the bylaw at that particular time. But... I don't know how the rest of you feel. You want to postpone it until Thursday?
I'd advertise it.
I don't see a problem with that.
Well, Thursday, you would... I believe it's going to be advertised as a special meeting or as a committee meeting.
It's a special meeting.
Special meeting.
Special meeting. So you do not have to list on the notice everything that is going to be discussed at that meeting, just that it is a special meeting. Part of these problems obviously arise when we have interruptions with CAOs, someone who's not sitting in their office ensuring that all of these i's are dotted and t's crossed. There's no malice meant on anybody's behalf if there is an oversight. So what we will do then, I think, is just go right into the hearing. And seeing as how I have opened the meeting, I will close it. Moved by Counselor Kuschnerek, seconded by Counselor Foster, resolve that we do hereby adjourn the special meeting of council at 7:10 PM to open the public hearing, dealing with the 2020 municipal financial plan. We further resolve that we shall reconvene on Thursday, June 4th, to deal with the financial plan. On favor? That is carried. Hey, this is a public hearing held by the council of the municipality of Swan Valley West in council chambers at 216 Main Street West, Swan River, Manitoba, the second day of June 2020 at 7:00 PM for the purpose of presenting the 2020 municipal financial plan. President, myself, Deputy Reeve Bellasha, Councilors Foster, Gade, Wills, Pierpont, and Kuschnerek, as well as LUD Committee members Grant Schneider, Brad Kuschnerek, and Curtis Hack. Interim Acting CAO, hopefully, will join us by phone a little later. From Finance, James Webb. From Administration, Deborah Schaefer. With the newspaper, we have Jeremy Bergen. And we have three individuals so far on phone. Meredith is here now too? Okay. Meredith Salama, Corinna Medwood, David Minisch, and Wayne Yastrzynski. Moved by Counselor Gade, seconded by Counselor Wills, resolve that council for the municipality of Swan Valley West shall hereby call to order the public hearing regarding 2020 financial plan for the municipality of Swan Valley West the second day of June 2020 at 7:12 PM. On favor? That is carried. Okay, what we will do this evening is, first of all, welcome everyone who has made an effort to either join us by a phone or come in person. We will give James a few minutes to highlight the changes in the 2020 financial plan, versus what it was last year. As well, I think at this point in time, we should show our appreciation to James for the many, many hours of work that he has done in crafting this document. So we thank you, James, for that effort.
Well, I appreciate your patience through the process. It has been quite a process, and I think we have a good budget. There's been many hiccups along the way, but we'll present it tonight and we'll see what kind of questions we have coming out of it. So if we take a look at the revenue and expenses, we're at $4 million and $90,000. The taxes that make that up are $91,000, basically $92,000 higher on a $3 million budget, which represents a 3% increase over 2019. The overall revenue is down slightly. Or it's not the full increase because in 2019, we had a double up of our federal gas tax, and so we didn't represent that in the budget for 2020. That comes at their discretion. The transfer from reserves is a slight increase, and that's to purchase equipment. And we can go over that list, that's in your package as well. Going down to expenses, if we look at that, general government services is $116,000 higher, and that's due to some vacant positions in 2019 in our staff. In protective services, we're up by $17,000. That's additional costs for the fire department. We have some purchases to make there to keep current. As far as transportation services go, we're at $146,000 higher than 2019. We're doing quite a bit extra gravel work. We've got some bridges and drainage that we're working on for in 2020. That's our plan. The same for environmental health services. That's recycling and the landfills. And in Benito, we have a little bit of work to do to keep current there and to expand the area. So we're looking forward to having that work done. We have a slight increase in public health and welfare services, and that's due to extra doctor's days in Benito. We had brought them on late in 2019, so hopefully they can get back there and continue doing the good work. Recreation and culture, we have a drop there, a slight drop there, and that's due to some of the facilities being closed for extended period of time, of course, during this 2020. Fiscal services, we got a little bit less there. That's due to just purchases, and we'll be purchasing from reserves on those capital purchases. In 2019, we bought a grader and a truck for the LUD. And we have, for 2020, we've got $40,000 for LUD equipment. And we've got $18,000 of improvements around town. We've got a computer system that we're going to upgrade for '20. We've got some road work to do for $200,000. And the fire department, we've purchased some capital equipment for them for $50,000. And then in transfer to reserves, that's what we mentioned earlier with the federal gas tax differential there. If we look at the mill rates, first of all, we should take a look at the total assessments. The total assessment's for 2019 are $230,600,000, and it's gone up to $248,226. So it's up about 8%. As far as mill rates go, the school division went from 13.82 down to 12.84. The LUD went from 27.289 to 27509. And the rural went from 2.533 to 2.891. At large, in 2019 was 9.242 and has dropped to 8.415. So that just gives you a highlights of the budget. There's a lot of information in those packages, but that just gives you an overview. And we can... And turn it back over to the chair.
Okay. So time now for questions from those that are participating.
Okay, we'll start with Dave Minisch has joined us. Dave, thanks for joining us, and you have a few questions to open the session?
Yes. If I was hearing you correctly, you were saying that you had, was it, a decrease in recreational services?
Yes, we did, yes. In our budgeting compared to last year, yes, it has dropped a bit.
Okay. It is my understanding, and you share for the grapevine, that Swan Valley West is not going to be contributing to or paying the price that the town is asking for their recreational service package. Is that correct?
You know, Dave, our agreements ended in 2019, and we don't...
That's correct.
And we don't have anything structured for 2020. As a good neighbor, we haven't always seen eye to eye with every opportunity that's come along, but we've always managed to work together to come up with a plan. And so we're going to...
I can follow that now.
Okay.
The rationale you used, if I was hearing correctly, was that some of the recreational services have been closed here in 2020. Was that correct?
I think it is. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but there has been some closures.
Okay. You do realize that when the municipality of Swan Valley West purchases recreational services from the town of Swan River, what you pay for in this year's budget is what we used last year. And what you're proposing, if that's the reason for your reduction, would be appropriate in 2021, not 2020 budget. Secondly, you are all aware that recreational services are not sold to Swan Valley West as a single unit. They are part of a package that includes the cemetery services, fire protection, and recreation. And it is an all or nothing option. My concern, and we can argue all day how much we should contribute for recreational services, and the town does not necessarily split out whether you want to pay for soccer fields, pools, skating rinks, or whatever. It is for recreational services. You can say you spend it where you like. But if we're not going to be paying the price and we're not willing to purchase this package, does the municipality have an alternate plan for fire protection? I want to know, because I got to renew my insurance soon, and they're going to want to know. Now, your fire protection agreements that you purchase require six months' notice to terminate. Now, thank goodness that the town did not give you that termination notice January 1. So you have at least six months' grace. Are you planning on using that to get your fire department to cover the entire Swan Valley West? Because it doesn't sound like you're interested in paying the price for the package that the town is going to present you.
I think this is Bill Galloway speaking, Mr. Minisch.
Bill?
I think that you have been perhaps misled a bit because when our first draft of the budget was presented, it didn't take long that evening. There was communication between members on this council and the town council, and I got a phone call from the mayor, pardon me, and he was upset because he said exactly what you said, that this year's payment is based on last year's cost. And that is not true at all. What they used to do during the four years of the agreement, and the mayor found this out in speaking with his CAO the following day, was they took the actual costs from the previous year and then applied those costs to the current year. Well, he was under the impression, as you are apparently, that we owe the service, or we owe the monies in 2020 for services received in 2019. And that is not the case.
What it is, is you're saying they use last year's usage or last year's model to determine this year's cost.
Exactly.
But you were paying this year. The prices may be based on last year, but the payment is for this year, is what you're saying.
Exactly, yes.
Now then, in talking with councilors from the town of Swan, that may be all very well, but using their formula, they say they would be looking for about $160,000, so they're going down to 100. My question is, all this is coming around, and you're going to have to negotiate. And the town and the councilors I've got have made it very clear. Buy the package or don't buy the package is up to Swan Valley West. And if you're not going to buy the package, it means you don't have fire protection. And I want to know, do you have a Plan B to provide me with fire protection?
Mr. Minisch, we have not yet been presented a proposal by the town, and we are waiting on that. Part of the issue this year, obviously, is with respect to the...
Usage and shutdown of recreational opportunities?
COVID-19 is the issue, right? Things would have been probably been in progress already. We have never stated that we are not going to purchase services from them. They have never...
But you budgeted for a reduction.
Well, pardon?
You budgeted for a reduction.
For this year, for one part of the package.
Well, there's no part of the package, the package is all together.
Well, that's how it was, Mr. Minisch. That's how it was. That's not to say that it will be that way going forward. I think members of this council, yourself included, when you signed the agreement... Will you kindly let me answer your question? What has happened in the past, you and other members of the previous council were very upset that the town tied all of the services together, including fire protection. Now, we don't know whether they are going to attempt to do that again or not, but we have not even yet had an initial meeting with them. And until we receive a proposal from them, we can only speculate. And speculating gets us nowhere.
You speculated to the tune of several tens of thousands of dollars in a reduction in your budget. Because you don't have any budget. You budgeted less for this expenditure. So I would assume you must have a plan in place for fire protection other than the town of Swan River. Not that whether you need it. But the whole problem was, is you can budget and do all you want. If you have no alternate plan for fire protection, they kind of got you between the rock and a hard place. And I'm not saying it's right, and I know it may be dirty pool, but it is what it is. And you can wish that they didn't do that. But I know that, as you said during my time on the council, we didn't like that. So I asked council, do you want to look at finding a Plan B? Do you want to look at the alternate would be, do we form our own fire department? We need that like another hole in the head. But those are your options. And it appears that you're going down the road of you don't want to pay the price, but you don't have a Plan B. I want to be sure I got fire protection. I want to be sure that when this budget's passed, there's contingency in there to see that I have fire protection. And as it stands now, in talking with town council and listening to this budget, you don't.
We have not had an initial meeting even with them. We have not seen their proposal. I think that this council can assure you that all members of this municipality will have fire protection.
So then you're saying you're going to buy their package?
I'm not speculating, David.
And they have every right to, we went down that. They have every right to, and in taking a straw poll on council, they have every intention of tying all of that together in a package. And yet you budgeted a reduction. So I mean, this budget has got a gaping hole in it. It's one thing you can budget for it and then end up with a surplus, but when you have it in there, that becomes a little bit worrisome.
Well, in speaking with the mayor, his fears were quelled, basically, after we explained to him the reason for doing it, so...
Okay, I want to go to one more point, Bill Galloway.
We're just going to move on to a...
You and I have disagreed on a few things, but I do agree on some things, but... Back long ago, the rural municipality of Swan River was not just purchasing fire protection from the town of Swan River. They were a small, limited partner. They were actually a partner. So it wasn't purchased service, it was shared service. Now, we have a shared service with landfill. And because it's a shared service, when the town originally tried to package landfill along with it, we said you can't because we're partners. They agreed. When the municipality of Swan Valley West ceased to become a partner in the Swan River Fire Department, goes back quite a ways. It goes back about the time when a Reeve decided got in a match about this fire protection, and this isn't the first time it's raised its head. And I believe you brought a shiny new fire truck and parked it outside the municipal council to show the town that you could go alone if you had to. Now, at the time I mentioned this, and you said, oh, no, no. But I did the game that I asked around. Short of finding the actual check, the man at the helm, when the then RM of Swan River ceased to become a partner and became a purchaser, the Reeve of the day was Bill Galloway. And now that's coming back 25, 30 years later to bite it. I hope you've got a better plan because right now, everything's just on speculation. The town's holding all the aces. Swan Valley West doesn't seem to want to acknowledge that. I wish you well with that because I really hope I can have fire protection because my insurance cost goes through the roof. When I was on council, you speculated that maybe we just purchase it on an add-on thing, and your insurance will cover it. I assure you, insurance does not cover the cost of firefighting. I researched that, limited to be a couple of thousand dollars. And we know that fire calls are a lot more than that. I'm retired now. I'd like to live peacefully and quietly here with the assurance that I don't have some of these things coming out of left field. And I'm not getting it with this budget. But I'll let you guys carry on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you have something to say?
I was hoping to address a couple of Mr. Minisch's comments.
Go ahead.
Are you able to hear me, Mr. Minisch?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
It's Counselor Gade. I just wanted to address a couple of your comments to provide the information I have because I think it's good for us to be as open as we can. So I'm not sure if you're aware, but Swan Valley West has a shared services committee. And that committee is a three-person committee that's tasked with negotiating with all of our municipal partners, be it Minnetonka's Boasman, be it the Arm of Mountain, or perhaps in this case, the town of Swan River. That committee was appointed, as all of our committees, by the Reeve. And at the time of original appointment, I served on that committee. I was able to serve there for some time with the knowledge that those agreements were coming up for expiration. I spoke several times... I spoke several times to my colleagues at the town of Swan River about the agreements. And about renegotiating them. And on numerous occasions, we agreed to renegotiate those agreements before the date of expiry. However, we were unable to motivate the calling of a committee meeting. By Swan Valley West to do that. So we continued to wait for some time. Unfortunately, just a few weeks before the expiry of the agreements. I was rather unsurmodus removed from that committee. So I no longer sit on it, I'm not able to give you the latest. However, it's my understanding that to date, that committee has still failed to meet. That has now been two budget cycles. The agreements have been expired since the end of December. And what I've heard of councils you heard tonight is that instead of negotiating with the town of Swan River, like they may be partners of ours. We are instead waiting for them to send a proposal over. I shared some concerns about that process, and I did speak to some of the members of the town of Swan River. And they assured me that such a proposal is forthcoming because we failed to negotiate in good faith with them. They also shared that the total value of that proposal will be higher than it was in 2019. Irregardless of any savings of the indoor swimming pool being closed for a period of time. So I think you may have some correct concerns that the package price is not properly estimated in this budget. However, I offer you some assurance. In the past approximately year or so, since you left council. We no longer have just the town of Swan River and Swan Valley West and Minnetonka's Bozeman and Mountain. We actually have a fifth political entity, the governance of valley, and that is called the four heads of council. They meet regularly together, make decisions. And they assure us that this won't be a problem. So Mr. Minisch, the best assurance I can give you is the four heads of council say, don't worry about it.
Thank you, councillor Gay.
Can I make one quick comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, just the thing, they talked about, and again, they talked about shared services. I think it's important to get your mind around the fact it is not shared services. It is purchased services. The landfill is a shared service. The issues you're talking about are purchased services. Somebody has something that we may want as a municipality. They are a vendor, we are a buyer. You have to get to an degree on a price, and if you aren't willing to pay, they won't sell it to you. And you do without. And as long as there's still a mindset that somehow this is a shared thing. And Swan Valley West has any leverage whatsoever. You're gonna have problems. You have zero leverage. And you are doing nothing to get yourself in a position where you might have some leverage. And yet you want to act as if you do. There's a lot of problems in the world that are created by people trying to use leverage they don't have. But again, I leave you with that, carry on, good luck.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Karina, we're gonna go to you next.
Hi.
How are you doing?
I'm busy.
Good.
For starters, I emailed the C A O at Mon Swan Valley West on April 30th requesting information on this public hearing. As well as copies of the budgets. And received no reply. On May 8th, I forwarded that email to every council member based on the email provided on their business cards. And received no response. Even when the information was ready. I still did not receive an email acknowledging my request. Or even indicating when the hearing was or when or where I could pick up the paperwork. Why is that?
I guess your initial request, the budget, the draft copy was not yet completed.
So why can't somebody reply and say, hi, thanks for asking, it's not quite ready, we hope to have it ready by this time?
Again, you may or may not know, we've had interruptions in our lead individual in the office. The C A O position.
He was employed at both of those email timestamps. My understanding is he left office on May 31st.
That, that is partly true, yes. So you do have them now, if you have a question.
On behalf of themselves for not responding.
You do have the material now, have you had sufficient time to look over it?
I've gotten through some of it.
Okay, well, if you have a question, we'll try to answer it for you.
Excellent. I watched the entire four hour, 29 minute and 55 second special meeting between the municipality of Swan Valley West and the L U D. And I have a few concerns regarding what's happening. The first one being, Reeve Galloway, you stated in the meeting at 1 hour, 16 minutes and 1 second, I quote. When you look at a service plan, whether you call it a budget or a service plan, it doesn't matter.
Excuse me, Ms. Medwood.
Yes.
We are entertaining questions on the proposed financial plan for 2020. If you have a question.
Documents also included from where, what I have is the L U D budget as well as the L U D service plan.
Okay, if you have a question on the numbers, then we are prepared to try to answer it.
Well, for starters, we need to make sure we're using the same vocabulary. Because a service plan and a budget are two very different things. And there needs to be recognition of that. So that we understand each other in communication.
Your point being, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. According to the procedures manual of the municipal act, which I hope all of you are familiar with. You should be aware of the fact that a municipal act does not permit an L U D to own capital assets, be it equipment, land for buildings. Therefore, there is a large flaw in the budgeting. Because there is, in the L U D budget and service plan. It includes expenditures that are not permitted based on the municipal act.
Are you resident, are you resident of the L U D?
No, I am not. I am a member of the public at large.
Okay, I was just wondering why you were carrying water for the L U D.
I am about.
I don't understand the term carrying water.
You're out of order, councillor Gay.
I'm about democracy. And I don't feel that's happening with this municipality.
Do you have a question regarding the 2020 financial plan?
I absolutely do.
Then ask it, please.
Why, I have a few questions for you all. Why is the L U D being charged? For expenditures that the municipal act prohibits?
I can speak to that. Councillor Pierre-Pont. I've spent several hours on the phone with municipal affairs. Going over the budget and what the L U D has or hasn't been charged. Everything in that plan is and will stand up as being a fair charge to the L U D.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, does taxing at large not mean the entire population of the municipality?
Yes.
It's taxing the assessment of the municipality.
Taxing the entire municipality for a service. Then you cannot individually tax an L U D. For that same service. So anything in your budget, and I've only gotten as far as, let's see, C A O and staff, office. Under your subtotal general government services, fire hydrants, animal and pest control, C A O. Like, I haven't even gotten through all of it. But all of those lines indicate that you are taxing at large, which includes the L U D of Benito residents. But then you also have another line. Billing the L U D for that exact same service. So you're double billing residents in Benito.
Well, according to everything they told me, when I spent hours on the phone with them, line by line through that. Is if they need a fire hydrant, they pay for it. If they need something picked up, they pay for it. They need to use a truck, they pay for it.
You can bill under at large. And put another additional expense for the same thing under an L U D. So anything you bill the L U D for directly. If you want money from the rural municipality, that's exactly who you have to bill for it. So on your C A O and staff, where you have 9,500 going to L U D. And 315,735 dollars to at large. That 315,000 needs to be to rural.
Did this budget go to municipal?
Not yet.
Not yet.
But that is. You're totally separate there, because the 9,500 is dealing with the L U D office. And the 315 is for the whole R M at large, rural and L U D to cover off their ministry.
L U D is not legally allowed or permitted to own anything, and that includes employees or staff.
You know what, they do have some responsibility there. So we've cleared that.
You can fart some service feed.
Just a second, I don't want to have to mute you.
But you can fart some labor.
Karine, take your turn, I don't want to have to mute you. So here's the thing, this budget has been done this way, it's been passed through municipal affairs for the last five years. They are going to find errors if there is one. Now, if you want to investigate it further, this is not the time to do it. We've answered your question, we need to move on to the next question. Do you have another question?
Yes, the Benito Rec Center, in regards to that.
Yes.
I am familiar with the Kenbow Hall, the Durbin Hall, the Big Woody, the Little Woody, the Lavender Hall. Are they all owned by the municipality?
No. No, they are not. Not all of them.
For the ones that are owned by the municipality. Are they being taxed 60% operational and insurance cost to the ward in which they reside in? And 40% to the outstanding municipality? Or are they all at large?
Wards have nothing to do with it, wards are for election purposes only.
Excellent, so then what I'm hearing is they're billed at large in the budget.
They get a very small grant, yes.
So then how is it fair or legal for a building. Which happens to have the name of Benito Recreational Center that is owned by the municipality, not the L U D. How is it not charged at large to the entire municipality?
Because that's the arrangement that's been, and it was that way previous to. To forced amalgamation. The village, former village of Benito chose to become an L U D. To have some ability to.
Just a second.
Could you please? Be quiet until I am finished answering your question. The village, former village of Benito chose to become an L U D so that they could have some ability. To direct the operation of the settlement.
My understanding is forced from the Minnetonka government. Regardless of that. An L U D cannot own, and therefore, when the transition took place. That becomes null and void. Whatever the village had in place prior to, if it doesn't line up with the criteria of what an L U D is to operate under. Then started from scratch.
Okay, well, thank you very much for those comments, you've got an answer. Do we have a next question?
Yes.
Okay, good, you got one more question, and then we're gonna move on, and we can circle back to yourself, Karine.
Why is it that the Swan Valley West council and staff are preparing the L U D's budget and service plan instead of the L U D committee?
You know what, the L U D committee was very involved in it. They did a great job of providing the numbers. And we turned it into a service plan that wasn't perfect. But at this time, that's what was accepted.
Okay, I actually watched the meeting, and from what I take from it. They were given the documents, they had a couple days to look them over, and they came back with a different answer. So no, they weren't involved in preparing it. They weren't included at all. It was a document that was handed to them saying, this is what we're billing you for the year.
Okay, we appreciate your opinion, we thank you very much for it. And we're gonna put you, we're gonna move on to the next one, but we'll take that into consideration for next year.
Excellent, I still have questions.
Yes, for sure, we'll circle back. Shane, your turn, just have to unmute.
Yeah, thanks.
Good.
I have to agree with some of the comments that Karine has made, which was well taken. But I do have three or four questions that are kind of lumped together along the same lines. One of the questions I have is regarding the recycling. There's revenue that comes in from the province for recycling. I don't see that, if the L U D is paying for recycling, why is the L U D not seeing any revenue from the province?
I believe that rebate goes into a fund for the waste site. There's huge expenses upcoming for getting all of the engineering, soil testing, et cetera. We will need to be clearing that land. Doing a lot of sloping or shaping of the land. Prior to it being acceptable for, for. Being able to bury waste.
I get that, but I still am wondering. Why the recycling incentives that are provided by the province under that recycling program. Would not be applied to reducing the amount of waste going to the landfill.
And so will you.
I thought the next people would write an answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Shane, it's councillor Gay. This budget does provide a $5,000 rebate to the L U D committee from those particular funds. So that's what we would call the R A R S levies. I think you're familiar with how that is. So for the first time in several years, the L U D will be seeing a portion of that money, and that amount will be $5,000.
Well, it would be more than a portion, that's probably more than, that's probably more than their share of recycling. As recycling has decreased in what you get in the R A R S levies.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no recycling program that's operated outside of, that has pickup outside of Benito, is that correct?
Well, there is no pickup anywhere yet, Shane, once his budget gets passed.
My point being is that anybody else that's recycling has to either deliver the stuff to Swan River. Or deliver it to the, to other recycling depots that are set up. So why is there only a portion of the money that the municipality of Swan Valley West is realizing? Being proportioned to the L U D? And before somebody says you can't figure it out, I'm pretty sure that there's got to be some budget history there. That would allow something to be a little bit more fair than hacking off 5,000. I don't even know what the total would be for that number coming in.
Well, Pot and Drive was also getting pickup.
Okay.
Kenbow.
South, south of Swan.
Yeah, south of Swan, down past the golf course. The other side of Benito on the highway. That's all been in that pickup as well.
Okay, so do I trust that you guys proportioned that correctly?
We've probably this year proportioned it to where that is more than what the L U D would get if you figured it out.
Okay. Couple of the things, and these are kind of related to somewhere where Karine was going on, which kind of, you almost think that we've talked, I've never even met the woman. I don't understand that along the same lines, the double billing for certain services. So for instance, there's snow removal. So for instance, there's snow removal and street lighting outside of the LUD of Benito. The at-large pays for that or rural or something, I guess. And then Benito gets paid, has to pay it again. So why wouldn't the budget actually reflect that services that are consistent between the LUD and the rural area just be budgeted the same? Like I think, Bill, I have to take offense to the fact that you said that Benito wanted to still be independent. That's not exactly what happened. What happened was Benito wanted to make sure that they still had a voice and that's why they wanted the LUD committee. Corinne is absolutely correct. The LUD cannot own anything, nor can they have staff, nor can they actually have buildings, vehicles or anything along those lines. The municipality is the actual owner of anything that was previously owned by the village of Benito. And as such, the municipality, if they wanted to either put a special services cost for some things that are specific to the LUD, they could do that. But the rest of this, I have trouble and I've said this the last two years at these discussions, I have difficulty understanding why that the municipality of Swan Valley West insists on using the budget process to put up with the poor bastards that live in Benito because it's almost like it's a complete separation and it's done intentionally. So I just, I need some clarification and I'm hoping James you can provide that because I haven't been able to get clarification for the last few years. Why is it that similar services, both rural and urban, are not combined into the at-large budget?
If there were no LUD, Shane, everything would be at-large.
You keep telling me that and I don't understand why the LUD wanting to protect their interest because nobody else is really looking out for their interest, why that is an excuse every time we talk about this, Bill?
Well, the simple fact of the matter is, is that having an LUD, there are certain rules and those rules have been tested over the last five years. You cannot look just at one line in a service plan or in a budget and pick it apart. You have to look at the total picture. And I guess the best...
I agree. That's what I, I would really like you to do that rather than looking at individual things. I'm looking at if services are similar, both urban and rural, why would they not be taxed on an at-large basis? And services that are just specific to the LUD be taxed to the LUD? Because they're not, they're not, there's no advantage to outside of, for the rural to be taxed at. For instance, garbage pickup. Why is that not a specific tax that goes to, or a special services tax for the village, for the LUD of Benito? Although I wouldn't want you to crank it in there now because we're already paying for it once all over, so I don't want to really pay for it again.
No, well, if you have a special services plan, it is removed from the general budget itself. So nobody is taxed double in any event if you have a special services plan. But as I said, over the past, well, since 2015, Municipal Affairs has looked at the budget. We've spoken to them numerous times. As Counselor Pierre-Pont has suggested, he has done so on his own and the way it is being or has been constructed, the financial thing is acceptable to government. You have any other question?
Yeah, just the recreation center. I'm going to go back to that and I really think it's important that council recognizes that the usage of that building is probably more so by rural than it is by LUD. And I know that that information's available. I also have heard that the council is not going to accept that information as being sound, which is unfortunate. But I can tell you right now, the amount of people that go through that building, there isn't that many people that are that active within the LUD of Benito. So obviously it's used by a fair chunk and before Counselor Pierre-Pont rips my head off, there is even from his ward that use that arena because they play hockey on a little bit of hockey field.
Yeah, no, but I'm not going to dispute that at all, Shane. That's not my argument. My argument is, is those people are coming to Benito already to support Benito, to help keep that open. They're not doing it because they need to. They're doing it because they want to support Benito. I have no problem with that. But I believe that Benito should be responsible for having that ring open a little bit because I believe it adds value to Benito, to the housing in Benito. And without it, Benito becomes like Bozeman, for instance.
I don't dispute that.
And I don't want to see that.
I don't dispute that, but I don't think that a sixty-fourty split is fair.
Well, I don't think paying for all of it's fair.
Well, you're in the same municipality I live in, so if I'm paying for recreation services or fire services from the town of Swan River or I'm paying for arena services in the village or the LUD of Bozeman, I think that it is fair that as a municipality we support our infrastructure within our municipality. Keep in mind, the people, the residents that live in every ward in this municipality have a vested interest in that arena because they are the owners. Yes, there is a board that's done a lot of improvements to that building and they've looked after it. But at the end of the day, that facility is owned by the municipality of Swan Valley West. It's not owned by the LUD. It was owned by the village of Benito because the village of Benito owns, has owned the land from day one and built by volunteer groups and it was operated by volunteer groups. But the Swan Valley West is the one that owns that building. No different from the town of Swan River owning the Centennial area.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any further questions, Shane?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Shane, if you can provide those usage numbers. It's James here. That'd be great.
Yeah, I can talk to the guys and get them to send them to you, James?
Yeah, that'd be great. Finance. Okay?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Gay, you had a comment?
I was just going to add, I told James I was going to sit here and blink tonight, but I have a hard time keeping my mouth shut. One of the ways that I like to envision this, just maybe to, because there's the division between the rural and the LUD and they keep pressing the subject of why we pay for services or elsewhere. So if we can for a minute just imagine, take everything out of Benito, just make it the roads. There's nothing there. It's just gravel, roads and grass. So we're part of the war, right? You guys are going to come in and do your thing. Let's put our houses in, nothing more, just our houses. We're going to pay the same taxes Mr. Pierre-Pont, Miss Blatch, everybody else. That's all we have. You guys would still come in and do your thing. That's what we're looking for. We want garbage. Now we pay a user fee. It's extra over and above. We want streetlights. We'll pay for that. It's over and above, but you got to pay Kenville. You got to do Durbin or it's not really over and above, right? Anything that we get extra. If we were gone, Ward Two's the smallest ward. We're just looking for the services that are spreading amongst the municipality and I think that's what they're trying to get at. Just that fair shake, right? The rink? I could go on and on and on and on. It's an asset to the entire RM. It's not just an asset to Benito. It's an asset to everybody. It's the same idea as the pool is an asset to the valley. It's pitched as a valley product, you know? Like I've said before with one thing, barely anybody in that city goes to their rink, but they all pay equally for it. Benito, you got to not picture it as this little town that wants to take a share of your money. It's part of the RM. And if we could just envision it as just the gravel, gravel roads and houses, that's it. And then we should pay for what we're gaining over what you guys get on your farmyards. Because that's all we really want. Like we shouldn't own staff. We shouldn't own trucks. We will pay for the service of the use of those trucks for the couple of hours it comes in to do stuff and you guys will use the trucks the rest of the time. The local staff? You can use them for mowing lawn or whatever. It's RM staff. They're not our staff. So if they have four hours of work to do in town one day, then we pay for four hours for no reason, whereas you guys should be utilizing them elsewhere. It's skewing everything. If it was envisioned as just an empty area, then Ward Two isn't getting their share. We should pay the excess.
Thank you.
So a couple of comments on Mr. Shishin's presentation. Counselor Gation. We've heard several times tonight that council has, for five years, had this budget approved by Municipal Services and that we've spoken to Municipal Services officers, that we've been assured is correct. So I just wanted to do a little bit of background on that so you understand exactly what Municipal Services have done. Some time ago, we invited Municipal Services to meet with us here at Swan River personally. And that meeting was envisioned as sort of fact-finding mission of a lot of these things and going through and seeing if it was right or wrong or what we could do and what should be done. Honestly, it wasn't a very productive meeting. We did have Municipal Services out here. There is a reporting of the meeting and it was certainly, if you review it, half the meeting was spent on looking for ways to remove certain members of council from Swan Valley West. Later in the meeting, we did get to the meat of potatoes and I did actually bring a copy of a couple, I believe, three years of the LUD service plan. I brought the act. I brought all of the information and I laid it out for the Municipal Services officers. I explained the concerns that I've heard from you tonight and I've heard from Ms. Medward. Certainly the concerns I've heard from Mr. Kishner in Benito, of double taxation, of not owning equipment, all these similar concerns. The end result of that meeting was not actually a blanket "it's okay" municipal services officer. It was actually, "we don't have anything to do with this, nor are we qualified to determine if this is okay. We can't provide you that information." We assume if the LUD and the council agree on it, then you're fine with it. If you don't agree on it, a hearing will be scheduled with Municipal Board and we will apply the act. So there has never been, certainly in a group setting, any indication from Municipal Services Officers or Municipal Affairs that this LUD service plan is created correctly. And nor have I ever had that indication in private conversations with them. Certainly Mr. Pierre-Pont's experience differs. He's had conversations with them or I assume he's laid out those exact same questions and he's received different answers than I have, which leads to trouble at the council table because we both believe what we were told, however, we were told different things. And that can cause a lot of stress when we both believe we're 100% right, yet we're on different arguments. Certainly, I tend to agree with what you're presenting tonight. I look at the procedures manual. I actually find the presentation here at the end is a, just as a rate payer, I have some questions for the LUD committee and for council. So I'm going to step onto my council chair at some point to do that. I'll be speaking to that. But I would encourage that, yes, you're probably correct on your viewpoints. To your questionable double taxation, a couple of the examples you used are not the best examples. Those ones can be explained as probably legitimate. However, I will concede there are several examples in this budget where the members of the LUD are taxed for the identical service that is then also taxed at large. So in essence, they are taxed twice for it in spite of the municipal act saying that is not permissible. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Ms. Salama have something?
Yes.
Meredith, are you, are you hearing the conversation clearly tonight?
Reasonably clearly.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you to the Reed and the council and to the Swan River staff that phoned and let me know how to participate in tonight's meeting. Like Corinne, I live in Swan River. Unlike Corinne, I do own property in the rural municipality of Swan Valley West. Going back to something I was taught many, many years ago, the definition of market value, the price a willing buyer will pay a willing seller. We are looking at purchasing services and it behooves us all that the most important one, don't lose our fire protection. We may not agree with some of the other stuff that we have to purchase, but let's not be blind to the most important one of all. We need to be protected from fire. I know, been there, done that. And if the insurance companies can find the least legal loophole to skip out, they will. And I think that's about all I have to say. I hope that somebody followed through to make sure that there are extra water trucks available to the fire department because that is necessary. Thank you, Reed Galloway.
Thank you. Round two?
Round two, yeah. Let's go back to David and see if he's good. David Minisch, we're back with you.
I am there.
Are you, are you? Did you come up with some more questions?
It's been entertaining. I don't mean that for say, Jesus.
Would it be worth, would it be worth more if you had to pay money?
Here's a quick question on the budget and I haven't seen it, so please bear with me. I have a question that I haven't seen it in there before in another budget and if you could tell me, I don't see any additional funds for council communication. And what I mean for that, additional funds being set aside to improve the communication of this council with its rate payers. Because I go and I hear all council rails against other people. You don't like it when Bill Gay puts his version on his Facebook page. And I'll be the first to say that what he puts on there, when I do some background on it, from my perspective, there's definitely a lot of spin put on it. But it is something. But the reality is that when a council meeting is held, and I want to know a little bit of what went on last night, I, pretty most of the council has Facebook pages and the municipality has a municipal page of their own. I know Glenn doesn't get online and that's a whole separate issue. But other than what you hear on the spin and the, what I consider a fairly slanted version of things, when I look for something else, I hear crickets. Nothing. That's got to change or you're not going to get any fire. You guys are just going to continue to fight for another couple of years. So if it's not on the budget, maybe you should consider getting enough money in there, whether it's hiring people. I know you're doing some videotaping now. Whatever it takes, your communication skills on what's going on in council and what the public perceives sucks. It's worth spending some money on. Next point. There's been all kinds of talk about the LUD and the village of Benito, former village of Benito. And it's pretty obvious that there's an area of this municipality that's really not doing that. Not that particularly happy. I don't see anywhere in this particular budget, of course, because I haven't really seen the budget per se, but I know that there has been laws to use special service tax. Is it because you don't understand them or don't understand the benefit? The borders of the LUD are pretty much carved in stone. And you hear the talk of, you know, the house on the other side of the highway, its taxes are so much lower than just across the highway and they get this and they get that and it's all the same. A lot of that could be, could be mitigated with special service fees. You could have a special service fee for recreation. Of course, it's not just the village of Benito that uses the recreation complex in Benito. It is the surrounding area. And yet, there hasn't been any special fees that ever proposed for that, so we end up fighting over it. I don't see any in this budget. We look at garbage collection. They go door to door. Do you want it? No, do you want it for people outside the LUD? When I take the garbage collection, make it a special service fee and put a circle around it and say, that's, this is the area that gets our garbage collection? That's a special service fee. And when you do that, all those special service fees have to be extremely transparent. They have to show up as a separate line with a mill rate to pay for them. You could do things by, I don't see you want to do garbage collection. You could have the economy of scale. If you, if they had the garbage collection, that would be for Benito one day of the week, then you could even do Kenville and an area around Swan River or Durbin and have a larger garbage facility, equipment for garbage handling. You could enjoy the economy of scale. It's been talked about, but nobody ever does it. I see no, no willingness to use special service fees to start to mitigate some of the issues. to use special service fees to start to mitigate some of the issues that keep coming up between the rate payers in Benito and the rest of the municipality. The, the council could do so much to reduce that friction and yet did not. Almost seems to be exacerbating it by making it worse. You know, by putting these things on. Has the council ever considered taking serious look and going with special service fees? Because there's lots of applications, many municipalities use them, and they are used to help level a playing field and deal with inequity. So the people getting service pay for the service, people not getting them aren't. And if you want to know, the town of Swan River is quite good at that. They lowered their mill rate by putting a lot of things on special services in which they were able to tax churches, school division, hospitals. They pulled an extra couple of hundred thousand dollars. They reached in because of things like school division are paid across the valley. They essentially reached into Swan Valley West pocket and pulled out about 60,000. Benito, you don't do that. Are you gonna put some special service taxes in and get with the game here? Because right now, it just seems, I, I pardon my amiable, but it's either like they're stupid or lazy why this isn't happening or whether, what's going on? And I do understand that it's been a rotating, a rotating door, revolving door in the CEO's chair. And, you know, you have Bill Gates there talking about all these things that should be done and that can't be done and railing against why they're not done. And if you looked at which single individual, in my opinion, is responsible, most responsible, not solely, but most responsible for that revolving door in the CEO's chair, Bill Gates can look in the mirror. Now, that's my opinion. But you guys gotta get some continuity going there and start using all the tools at your disposal to run this municipality. Benito should not be feeling the way they are. There needs to be some equity put into it and it's not hard to do. And I don't see it in this budget.
Okay, thank you, David.
Mr. Minisch, Mr. Pierpont. So you won't be upset then when your tax bill comes and shows it on the bottom in the rural that you're paying X number of dollars for the Benito Rec Center?
Yes. You want, remember that if you want to put a special levy and a service fee for the Benito Rec Center, if you feel that drawing a circle in an area around, that I'm included in that area?
No, that's not. We took it out of at-large and it's being the 60-40 split. The 60 is going to be coming under rural, not at-large. So on your tax bill now, it will have a line that says Benito Rec Center, X number of dollars.
Why would you not do it as a special service fee? Take in the area around Benito instead of being 60-40, the L U D at 40 and at large. Why not take a special service fee for an area of, let's say, six or seven miles around Benito, doing 60, the 40, the rest at large? You can do all kinds of these things if you'll take in special service, use special service fees properly. Would be far more fair.
Okay, thank you.
If that's what it takes to make everybody happy, I'm happy to pay it. It won't be that much.
Good. Well, you have one?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
We're back to Corina. Corina, you got a couple more questions for us?
Yes, Shane actually covered my recycling question. Thank you, Shane.
Okay.
Now, on the Benito L U D budget, it has line 550-200, Doctor Clinic. In that meeting, it indicated that this was gonna be a 50-50 split between the L U D. But I don't see it on the Swan Valley West municipal budget, any mention of doctors. So who is that other 50% being billed to? The at-large or the rural?
It, it is split between the L U D and the rural.
No, it's not. It's L U D and at-large.
Is it?
No.
Because if you've got the other half billed to at-large, it's double dipping into Benito's pocket again.
Yeah, that, that could be an oversight. That, I'll have to take a look at that, Corina. The next question.
Well, as I go further down this budget, I see that the street lighting actually does have, it's a service that is provided to many communities and it's billed out to rural and L U D. But yet, you told me in the previous ones I mentioned that it was okay to build to at-large and L U D.
I didn't say it was all right. I said it could have been an oversight. But if you were asking about the office, that's, that's a different matter.
Well, with regards to...
Do you have any other questions about the numbers?
Yeah, those are them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Shane have anything further?
Shane, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I got one more. So I'm wondering, with the fact that the Swan Valley District Recreation Commission is going to not be collecting any funds from the, from the municipalities for this fiscal year, I see it's still budgeted in there, under Recreation Cultural Services. Where's that money gonna go? Yeah, it looks like it's, well, trying to read this thing. I don't know if it's 25-9 or if it's 18-4. It's budgeted at-large for Swan Valley District Recreation Commission.
Is that, is...
Is that previous year's? Like, what is, what's happening with that money from this year?
Yeah, you know what, Shane? That, that is from 2019. That, that page there that you're looking at, if you, if you go to the previous page, it's, it's not in the 2020 budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that it just marked as recreation there, not Swan Valley District Recreation on that other page?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. But that was for 2019. And we did write them a check for 25,000 for...
For 19, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And the, the check came back for a few hundred dollars more than that.
18-4 came back, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's right.
So has that money just been redistributed within Recreation and Cultural Services then? Or?
It was taken out because it wasn't, it was, the district wasn't in effect this year, so we didn't budget.
Well, I realize that.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if that money has stayed in Recreation or if it's been redistributed somewhere else. Because that's, that for all intent and purposes would be the basket funding, right? That comes, that was part of the old ROP agreement?
Yeah, it's, it's true.
The one thing council had talked about, Shane, was trying to maybe run some programs in Benito?
Yeah, I, I watched that meeting. I don't even want to get into the fact that a recreation program, or we, we're hiring programmers for the summer and we always have. And we'll continue to do that because we had to make commitments already prior to budgeting being done. That was not the intent of that position. It's unfortunate that our representative from, on the Swan Valley West Council couldn't make the last couple of meetings. The recreation programmer would be doing more of this stuff related to programming recreation across the entire valley, similar to what we had prior to Patty Hinkleman getting hired, when we had a rec director that was a facility manager and a recreation programmer. As I discussed at the G, whatever, G7, G12, whatever you guys are called in Durban, that was the intent of trying to get that funding to try it out. But that's already water under the bridge. And I'm, you know what, the, the, yeah, you saw the letter. So I'm not gonna go there. But at the end of the day, I'm not worried about that as much as the fact that that ROP, the recreation opportunity programming money that was thrown into the basket funding by Mr. Palliser and his friends, was, the intent was to keep that in Recreation. And I hope that is being applied to Recreation and not being applied to general funding for the, for the municipality. Because the intent would be to try and keep recreational costs lower by having that funding still applied correctly.
Okay, thank you very much, Shane. That's round two of questions unless Meredith has something further to add?
No, just thanking everybody for this opportunity. I find it has been really enlightening. And it would be nice if, while COVID is still messing up our regular attendance at council meetings, that the same kind of thing could occur. Once again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, you suggested you had something as a private citizen you wanted to address?
Given our distance and I'm always able to place elsewhere, I move from this chair, but I'll at least figuratively step over. I had three questions, primarily they're directed to the L U D committee because they're here representing their plan tonight. My first question revolves around the service plan. There's a 19-page document that's issued by the government that sets out the exact way to make the service plan that complies with the municipal act. I'm curious if the L U D has gone through this document and why the service plan does not match it in any way, shape, or form. Because the document couldn't be more clear in the specific ways the act says to make it, the specific ways the department wants it made. And yet, your service plan has no resemblance to it.
I mean, only I can answer on that is that when we, as we started, of course, I was the chairperson, but we were trying to steer in the right direction to get things for the Village of Benito and we thought we were doing the right thing. And there was really no understanding or knowing it was kind of, when we're into, how would you say, new waters, we don't, we weren't really understanding what we were, we were trying to, we're feeling our way along. We did meet with the L U D committee and that was, I believe, two years ago, I believe, to ask some questions and stuff and try to get some advice of, we kind of get. And I believe it was myself and Zbinski that were here for that. So there, we were trying to get a better understanding or better handle of how to step forward or do the right things. And now, of course, Brad has brought in a number of things and enlightened us with a number of L U Ds. We were not aware, you know, our understanding or, or didn't look into, I guess I was the chairperson or myself, didn't look into it at that time to say, look, this is how these other guys are doing it. We thought we were doing the right thing. I'm not here to boast we did the right thing and the wrong thing. I'm just here to say that we're trying to do the best that we can with the services we have or the, with the ability that we were trying to do in the sense that trying to step forward to do the right thing for the village. That's, and trying to keep our identity, I guess, is the biggest thing is to make sure that we still had a say in what was happening in, you know, in our, in our existence, I guess, would be the biggest thing. Back now, we're understanding like service plans and stuff like that. If you listen or checked the minutes, the last number of meetings before years ago, we didn't really know and nobody advised us or nobody was saying, you know, we're not in the municipal affairs all the time. We're just not. We got our own businesses, doing our own things, you know, we're trying to do our own job. And, you know, we're elected at-large, but I mean, the person or the CEOs or the persons should be looking into these things and saying, "Look, here's some plans that these guys have. Here's a better way to do things or this is an option that you can do better things this way or work this way." We didn't have any of that, any of that type of understanding or anything like that. We just, we always were doing the things that we thought were the best for the town. That's all I can say. I really know any other way of putting it. And I mean, this is fees for service because now what it's costing us for, oh, I think it's, I didn't just look at it, I think it's $109,000 for just, you know, and like, we're not, and wages and all of that, and splitting the wages and we had overtime and where it's supposed to be billed and all those things. We don't know anything about that because, like I said, we don't have a financial officer in our office or nor that you guys did either here. We didn't know where we were going. We didn't have numbers. We didn't have anything. We didn't have a clue, you know, what we were spending. We were just like, it'd be like me running my business and I just keep writing checks and I hope that the money's in the bank. Well, that doesn't work. You know, anybody that runs the business knows that that doesn't work.
Well, you know what, guys? Thanks. And I think that we were going to start looking ahead, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
And that document is gonna become, you know, part of the meetings and part of the decisions. So if I could chime in.
That's very good.
If I've got, if I'm gonna be wrong to, to help with that.
Well, I thank you for your hands and getting us some information, James. Appreciate it. Because we needed some, you know, we don't have anybody there to, to guide us along, to tell us where we're, you know, basically. And we had to have some, I've asked for a number of emails, search back, you know, for asking for information. And of course, and at the time, you guys didn't have somebody here that was in that position to pass on that information, I guess.
And we've, and we've heard it loud and clear tonight, you know, that there is concerns between the partnership, not the partnership, we're in the same, we're in the same thing.
We're in the same.
And you know what? And we've heard, we heard it loud and clear. We heard it before this, tonight's meeting. And we've made a commitment to each other to, to work on that.
That's right.
You know, so that's, that's where we gotta go from here. Just take these comments and keep moving.
And you mentioned, Grant, that the L U D committee was fresh in that role. Well, so was the municipality.
Yeah.
You know, there was no experience on the municipality's part either. And there was no malice intended.
No, no. I don't think there was any malice. And I'm not implying that. I'm just saying...
No, I understand that. But I'm just saying that there was no malice intended then or now. We, you know, we all live in the same valley and we have to be fair and get along. So, moving forward.
Question two. My family owns property in the L U D. We participated in a survey process undertaken by the L U D and my council about recycling. I don't think the survey process was necessarily undertaken well, but we participated in nonetheless. My understanding is there was a 90% or greater response rate of people that said they did not want recycling on their L U D taxes. Yet, when I look into the service plan, even with certain results saying 90% did not want it, it's included in the service plan. And I'm wondering if there's any reason why the L U D would go against the vast majority of respondents?
I can answer a couple of those questions. From what I've talked to many people, residents of the Village of Benito, they were all for recycling. They didn't like how it was presented to, for more taxes on their recycling. It was, there wasn't a principle with the $12 a month. There's a principle of how we got to the $12 a month. And that's what I've heard from many, many residents. I think if you go around and talk to them. And if you go back long enough, the recycling program in Benito was very well used. It was something that we found was very important. And it's keeping our landfill fresh and clean. Anything that's not gonna dissipate or like tin cans for 40,000 years is gonna turn to local coal. Like, we're not gonna be here to see it, but we still have to look at the next 40 or 50 years. And I'm not gonna be here in that time anyway. But my kids probably might be. And those, and those things are important to the, to the environment in general. I mean, we all know, it's the principle of how we get to the money. But we want to make sure that we do the right thing for all of the people in the community, whether it's right now or 50 years from now. Maybe we, none of this will be likely here, but the point is, we want to make sure that it's there for our next generation. And if we don't take care of it and somebody doesn't step up, it won't be there for the next generation. We'll ruin ourselves. And look at just the environment right now. Right now, just taking a global look on the satellite and like, you can actually see the pyramids of Giza from the city. Like, they've never seen them in, they said, 25 years. Like, there's things like that go on now. They say they actually, when you can see China from the sky, from the, you can't see it before. And it's all because of COVID. But we're not being, there's not been much as much as it was before. But if we keep doing the same things we were doing before, we're just gonna ruin this thing for everybody. Period.
Last question. I'm, Bill.
Bill, can I just comment on that? Can I just cut in here for a second?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Is that all right? I just want to comment on that survey that was taken.
Okay, we'll let Counselor Gade finish first, David.
No, that's Shane.
Oh, Shane? Oh, I'm sorry, Shane.
Okay, my last question isn't long. I printed off six pictures of houses. I know it's not terribly fair to those on the telephone, but the learning experience is really for council, not for other presenters tonight. So I have six houses. None of these houses are worth slightly different values, but we're all aware how mill rates work. So the mill rate takes into effect the actual value of the house. Some of these houses are very different than other ones, and we've heard lots of talk about fair. None of these houses have sidewalk, none of them have any special snow clearing requirements, none of them get their driveways cleared by the municipality. However, in this pile of houses, I would urge council to some point determine if you can pick out which houses are charged three times more taxes by mill rate than the other ones. Because that's currently what's happening in this budget. This budget provides that some of these houses are more difficult than others. Some of these houses are all over the valley, some of them are very close together. Some of them within twenty feet of houses that are a different amount. I find it exceedingly hard to have six pictures of houses and to have no ability to looking at them, or really the services they receive, to understand why some of them pay three times more mill rate. And to me, that, that's simply never going to be fair. So I urge you guys, I looked at the L U D Committee mostly because the L U D Committee represents the people of Benito. They represent those people that are paying three times more. In many cases, even though their next-door neighbor is not. And until that is addressed, it's very hard to say that we're passing a fair budget here. That's my question. Thank you, Mr. P.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Shane.
So just going back to Bill's question about the, um, the recycling, uh, survey that was done. Um, I have no doubt that ninety percent of the people that phoned to complain about the fact they didn't want recycling were in favor of not having recycling. The document that was sent out was basically, um, written in such a fashion that if you didn't respond, you were in favor of it. And if you did respond, then you could have, you could, um, put your comments against recycling. Link forward to the council. The, the people that live within the L U D that I have talked to didn't respond because they thought, well, okay, they're only looking for people to respond that are not in favor of having recycle out. So I, I think if you're going to, if you're going to base it on that much, if you're going to put that much onus on it, base it on the fact that if you're going to do a plebiscite or a referendum, have the vote. Don't sit there and put out two different pieces of information, and then base the entire decision based on the ten people that called, nine of which didn't want to pay extra for recycling.
Yeah, point well taken. It was, uh, an administrative decision to, to pen the questionnaire the way it was, and, uh, like I say, point well taken. Well, uh, thank you all for, uh, participating. It's good to, uh, clear the air, and we will just go one last round around the table if any counselors have any questions. If not, again.
I just got to thank everybody on the phone here, just going to unmute them.
Yeah, uh, I have thanked them, uh, for, for participating. And so we will now move to adjourn. Uh, moved by Counselor Belasha, seconded by Counselor Pierpont. Resolved that this public hearing shall now adjourn at eight thirty-eight P M. On favor? That is carried.